Okay, it's around 7:14 on Tuesday, July 12th. And I'd like to open the business meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and some particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, or a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. And this meeting is being taped recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. And once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. First order of business, do we want to do chairman?
You can start first.
Okay, so first order of business would be nominations for chairman. Current chairman Gina Tebow is late for this meeting, but we're going to proceed without her. So would anyone like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jeff to be chairman.
Second.
All right, I guess I accept the nomination. Are there any others?
Yeah, he has to accept it first.
Excuse me?
He did accept it.
He has to accept it first, yeah.
Thank you.
Would you like to put your name on as a...
No. Your next year.
Sean, no?
Two years.
Is it two years now?
No.
It's been a few years.
I don't have the schedule.
Gina was two years, Paul was two before that. So I'm happy to do that for another year if that's what you guys are going to do.
That'll be great. Thank you, Jeff.
So we need to take a vote?
Thank you.
On that, or we do...
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Do I vote on this or no?
Um...
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to nominate me as chairman. I guess all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess all abstain.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, so, okay, I guess I'm chairman.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can sit in the middle.
No, you don't get to move over. That was exciting. This is an election year, you know? All right. Second order of business is to approve the minutes of June 7th, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes for June 7th, 2016.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve the minutes is... And seconded, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Nobody? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David Staines.
David Staines. Motion carries.
Okay, so there's no... We usually have the monthly finance update, so I need to sit with the town accountant to reconcile the FY '16 and start the FY '17. So I'm doing that the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So...
Okay.
At the next meeting, I'll have reconciled '16 and show you what starts for '17.
Do you have any warrants that are...
Nope.
Outstanding or need to be approved at this point?
No.
None, okay. So the next item then would be correspondence, right?
Yes. So, hold on. Mine go out of order here.
Long Hill Road?
Yeah, building correspondence. So, um, date on Long Hill Road. So I met with the applicant and their contractor. So this is an addition for an accessory apartment. They are in the process of getting their plans ready. And it'll probably take at least a couple weeks, so it'll be in September. I'm late for that. I do have other ones out there that one can just come in tomorrow. It's with an attorney. I'm still waiting on National Ave. I think you... May I may have told you that about another concreting, concrete crushing operation.
A second week?
Perhaps.
What's the deadline to meet for the August hearing?
Tomorrow morning, she said.
Is that... So what you said, tomorrow?
Yeah, they would've had to file... They would've had to file July 5th.
Oh, so...
Okay, so there's nothing on the docket? No hearings in the docket for August?
Right.
Okay. So were we gonna... I don't mean to jump around, but...
Yeah.
Do we want to meet in August? You want to skip and meet? Is there a reason to meet in August?
It's just the finance stuff.
No, Paul and I are both...
You're both away.
Both away the first week.
Yeah.
If we did want to meet, it would probably have to be the second week if we wanted to do that.
Okay.
Do you think it's necessary from an administrative standpoint, or can we wait till September?
No, I can wait.
Okay.
There's nothing I need... And if I need something signed, if I needed ink or something, I can just leave it at the station.
So not to jump around, but do we want to say our next meeting then would be September? I don't have the date.
6th, it's right on the bottom of the agenda.
Perfect.
The day after later.
So the next meeting would be Tuesday, September 6th.
Okay, so that application will be that night. Then we have received a public hearing notice from the planning board for 1A and 1B Spalding Road. They're looking to do a common driveway. And just today, I received, when I came back in, I received this from West Street, which is West Street, Tids Junkyard, West Street. They were to file a notice of intent. If you look at the second page, I just gave you a copy of the front of the notice of intent. And the second page is the board's, your 2015 letter, just stating that the permit was still valid and that they were going to file a new notice of intent to begin the construction phase, which includes a water treatment plant in which they will have to give us a letter of credit from a commercial bank with a term of not less than five years and the amount of $100,000 to secure the construction of that treatment plant. And prior to any building permits being issued. So that's... I just stuck that in your agenda, that just came in today. I wanted to, thinking we weren't going to be here, we're on August 2nd, so I wanted to put that in there. The application's not ready. And the only other thing was you would... I think Jackie would've said, let's carry it over under old business, was just talking about meeting minutes and how extensive you guys want them to be or not.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my thing is just if it's something that's really complicated and death, I can, you know, I put in more. And if it's something a little simpler, maybe we can cut them down to cut down on the time it takes.
I think you can summarize certain conversations that...
Summarize, yeah.
It's all on tape now, and nothing gets taped over.
Right.
So it's all on video. If anybody wants to go back, it's available.
Right.
So my personal view, without really reviewing the open meeting law too carefully, my thing is that they need to be accurate. So if they're oversimplified and not too specific, then they're accurate.
Right.
If we try to get too specific and things aren't quite right, now the minutes aren't necessarily correct, so...
So I'm gonna...
Am I getting it?
Well, I know exactly what you're saying.
So when you try to get every word and now something's not quite right, A, it takes forever to do it, and B, they're not always exactly correct, and the meanings can not be consistent sometimes. That's not on you, I'm just saying...
Yeah.
This is what happens. So as you said, if it's something that's obviously very relevant and necessary to have in there, then you take the extra time to put those details in. If it's general conversation or something about the, you know, the applicant described the project in detail, including X, Y, Z, as opposed to, you know, every word, then I think...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that further.
Sometimes when you summarize too much, then you don't understand.
You get lost, right?
Basically, it's the time and place of the meeting is the most important thing, and then it's simply a summary of the discussion on each subject. Just a summary.
Yep.
That's fine. That would cut a lot out, because like you said, it's already digitally recorded and it's always there if people need it. List of the documents and exhibits, which you always do.
Yeah.
And the decisions that are made. That's it.
If you feel there's something where...
There need not be a verbatim transcription.
Yes, there you go.
There might be something that comes up that's pertinent, whether, you know, councils are here, and you know, something like that.
Yeah.
You know, it's a very... It's a big point. Maybe it's highlighted, or it's, you know, you know, as discussed further between cop men and whoever, you know, the other attorney is. You know, you can highlight certain things, but a lot of stuff, you know, a summary is fabulous.
Sounds good.
Does that make sense?
I'm gonna have Sharon to help summarize.
There you go.
I know how hard it is. Okay, Gina, you arrived at 7:52. And I apologize.
No problemo.
You're not chairman anymore, so...
Well, did that happen? I didn't show up and I got off.
You got the boot. We had our convention and, you know...
So that's what I was gonna ask, are you official?
Yeah, I am. I'm in your seat.
I would've voted for you too, just for the record.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess, or just...
Are we done? Um... I... Under correspondence...
Yep.
We... I have received a couple emails from Les as far as the Dunkin's Plaza, so just so that everybody knows, I have corresponded with him about their need to come back to us. And in my opinion, I think you were copied on a couple of those emails, if you read them or not. But he was looking for interpretation on our previous decision. So I was... I have been helping him interpret what that decision, the variance decision. You helped me write that one, as I recall.
With regards to what? The septic?
They're changing some uses in there, so they're getting some potential new tenants, and so his view was he thought maybe they had to come back to us, and I've been corresponding with him on, I think, two occasions. And I said, as long as they're meeting parking and septic and the use is listed, we gave them a variance for those uses. If those uses meet and are consistent with what we gave them, then I've kind of said they don't need to come back.
Yeah, because we get, what? Driving school, medical, restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
And then another one.
And...
Retail, I thought.
Retail.
Retail.
It's retail.
So there's a Domino's Pizza that's right now looking...
Right.
Considered a restaurant.
And that's just a takeout, it's not even...
It's another restaurant that... He said, well, they only had one restaurant at the time. I said, it doesn't matter, we didn't say you can have one of these and one of those. It was any combination, provided you didn't exceed the limitations of the site with regards to parking and septic. That was our big thing. We didn't want to give some perceived right to exceed, you know, code on those aspects, so that's why the... Anyway, so, anyway, I've been corresponding with him. So I don't think there's a need for them to come back to us, I don't think they will, but Patty will obviously keep us in the loop if they do it, so...
So if they do, just a reminder that I recuse myself, you know, that's a factor. I mean, I think we have enough people there, but...
I mean, they have the water resource, they...
They got it.
At this point, they're...
They got it.
He agrees that they don't need to come back.
Good.
And we're not... Yeah, I mean, we're not going to review their parking place, that would be planning. And the septic would be health, so, anyway. So that's all I had. Do we want to... Well, we can't meet till 7:30 on the hearing anyway. We got about five minutes, so it'll take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
And we'll open the hearing on or about slightly after 7:30.
Okay.
A motion to close the business?
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a motion to close and seconded by Sharon. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business meeting's closed.
I'll start correcting you now.
Absolutely. I deserve it, too. You can't do that. Okay, it's about 7:35 on July 12th, 2016, and I'd like to open the hearing for 55 Bailey Lane. If the applicant wants to come on up, and you guys can have a seat. While you're doing that, Gina, do you mind reading the legal notice for this?
A petition has been filed by John Roy A. Connell and Rhoda Somera of, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, of 55A Bailey Lane, Georgetown, Mass., for a modification of a previous variance, ZBA file number 86-1, for an addition that will encroach on the required front-side setbacks and a variance for an existing deck that encroaches on the required setbacks in the RC zone pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Article 2, Sections 9 and 84. The premises affected is 55A Bailey Lane, Georgetown, Mass., and identified on the assessor's map, 6A Lot 15. The petition will be heard by the Georgetown zoning board of appeals at the Georgetown Town Hall, 3rd floor meeting room, on July 12th, 2016, at 7:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. It's gonna take a second, I'm gonna introduce some members for you. Sharon Freeman is an alternate tonight, Sean Dean is a regular member, Paul Schillen, Dave Kapnis, and Gina Tebow are all regular members. I'll be the chairman, I'm Jeff Moore, and our clerk, you've probably already met, is Patty Petari.
Many times, I think I drove her nuts.
So, the five regular members will be voting on this tonight, but Sharon will be involved in the hearing and is free to discuss, but she would not be voting. So if you want to introduce yourself and let us know what's going on and...
Resident here since 2012. My wife and I were, you know, exploring the idea of going up a second floor, and we didn't initially know that the previous owners had pulled a permit for the addition on the garage. We found out about that, and we thought, you know, you just pulled the permit, it was fine. As I came for my permit, when I talked to Mr. Gordon downstairs, they had to file for a variance. I was under the impression that that variance would allow me to go up, even though I wasn't encroaching closer to the property lines, not knowing that going up still increased the nonconformity, even though it wasn't moving toward the property line itself, hence
Do you want to talk a little bit about the project, maybe, and what your plans are? Explain what's existing and what you plan to change.
Absolutely.
And I'll sit, you guys can...
I'll take care of that. So this is the existing first floor. Currently, the roof is framed with trusses, 16 inches on center, so everything's gonna be a little bit more involved than with a traditionally framed roof.
Can you speak up a little?
I'm gonna have to lay down 16-inch TGIs every 12 inches on center, so that I can sister up the existing trusses. Once they get sisted up and shored up, I'm gonna chop off the top of the trusses and lay down my subfloor, then second floor walls, and then trusses for the main portion of the roof, but above the master bedroom, which is right now above the garage. I've got new traditional framing rafters. Second floor layout. Where it comes to the top of the stairs, there'll be a landing that will end up being an office. We have two accessory bedrooms here with a community bath. Master bedroom, like I said, above the garage, with the master bathroom and a lock-in closet. Let me take you over some elevation. This is the proposed second floor. So existing right now is everything you see from the soft line down. We've got a cantilever over the front one foot, off the back, we've got a cantilever over 18 inches. There will be no cantilever on the master bedroom above the garage.
And that cantilever, it is right on the, that's the non-conforming end of the building, right? So that would be perfect if you're not making that any wider?
Correct. The intent is right now, due to budgetary expenses, we're gonna do hardy clapboard siding on the second floor. First floor is to exist and to remain at a later date, will match the second floor, just to keep it homogeneous, so to speak.
Paul, just to clarify your question, the cantilevers are on the sides that are meeting setbacks?
Yes.
They are. And as the setback comes to a corner, as the house comes to a corner?
Yep.
And that projection does not project into the side the area that does not meet the setback?
Correct. Yep.
Here we have some elevations on the side. I actually have a plan showing the average grade as well. Nothing special here, other than you get to see the total height, the total width, and the cantilevers themselves. Now, we are gonna do a bump out on the front above the garage, but that's going opposite of the side that would be encroaching the setback that we have right now. It's coming off the front of the garage, which is going toward the street, and I believe I have 160 feet to Bailey Lane. It's not going off the side of the back, which would be encroaching in on the existing areas. The bump out's gonna be here, in the front.
I was gonna ask if there's any audience, do you want to continue a little bit, or are you...
A little bit, I just wanna make a little background of...
Oh, good night. No, it's a plot plan, this is always the best.
Oh, yeah. So I had a lot of help, I spent a lot of time during the day coming down, asking questions, and Les has been fantastic. Learned a little bit about my property, what happened, I believe the permit was pulled in '82, it was built in '83. This garage, when they pulled the permit, did a variance, I believe it was in '84.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Still was eighty-six.
John, could you just speak up a little bit?
What ended up happening, I found out that if you look at the front, you need 160 feet worth of linear frontage, you have to have a residence on the property. Back then, I think the minimum requirement was, the existing is 80,000 square feet for residence for the RC zoning. Back then, it was, I believe, an acre, not 100% positive. My neighbors, Tracy Lots here, they only brought the behind us. They only had, the previous owner only had 40 feet worth of frontage. Their driveway ended up becoming a private way, in order to give them 160 feet worth of road frontage to build that residence there, which changed my setback from here, from a 40-foot side yard setback to a 50-foot front yard setback, which is what encroached on the garage itself.
Okay. You got a variance to do, well, not you, but there's a variance on the property to build the garage, I think, is that right?
Correct.
That variance was for side setback.
Yes.
Because the construction of that garage was going to encroach on the side, the house was already built. So what, and a variance is permanent, so it goes with the property, so you now own this variance here, which is what specifically allows you to do, and there's a plan in here that says that it's to be built to the plans and all that, so it's exactly what's allowed in perpetuity. So I'm just, I'm a little bit confused as to what it was allowing, so this was, and I know this wasn't you that...
I saw the previous variance when I looked through it, it was painted with an extremely broad brush.
My understanding is that they granted a variance to build the garage because they felt that, for whatever reason, it wasn't...
It came close.
Originally, right, it wasn't originally the fault of the original property owners, it was no longer, it was the fact that that became a corner lot. So the setback needed to be 50 feet instead of 40 feet. Somehow that, so that's, at least that's what is explained to us by the billing inspector here. The original, no, no, our billing inspector. He has a nice description here, just looking for the application.
You're talking about the Heritage Way plan that was put in in 85?
This is where, Heritage Way was approved by the Georgetown planning board in 1984 and constructed along the former side property line of the lot, causing the lot to become a corner lot in which a 50-foot front yard setback is required, because it's a corner, so it's both Heritage Way setback and Bailey Lane setback, both have to be 50 feet. So they decided, because that became an actual road, that it messed up the setbacks, but they decided to grant the variance anyways, because it sort of was after the fact of the house being built. So it changed, the house when it was built, they could have put that addition on there, but when Heritage Way went in, then they couldn't, so they decided to allow it.
I think that's what the variance was for. Well, we deliberate that a little bit, is there anybody in the audience that has any, anything they'd like to say about the application? Has any comments? Sure, if you want to stand up and just introduce yourself, your name and address and...
Yeah, my name is Norman Markey, I work at, live at 64 Bailey Lane.
Norman, can you just sign in right there and talk from here?
I do a lot of things at the same time.
I know.
I've served on a number of these boards, as well as the finance committee, for a number of years. I've lived in Georgetown since 1975, and on Bailey Lane since that time. I'm very excited about the young people moving in, number one, and wanting to make the improvements that should have been made, numbers of years ago. His, I'll quote it this, little house, I'd like to see a bigger house, because I live across the street, and the house that was built was just a small house. And I can't find anything wrong with the expansion of that house. In fact, I'm very much in favor of it, and these other neighbors that are sitting here, who've been my neighbors for, well, barely knew, you know, a number of years, but I'm the oldest one on the street right now, I hate to look into that one. No, very much in favor, my wife is very much in favor of it, and like I said, I've been on a number of your boards, in the finance committee, for seven years, so I pay my dues in Georgetown. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody else that has any other comment on this?
I'm confused with the setbacks, why is it 40 and 50 I was hearing?
Can I just check name, please?
I'm sorry, yeah, you have to introduce yourself.
My name is Gene Hummer, 55 Bailey Lane.
Thank you.
Right to the right of him, is your...
Have you signed in, sir?
I'm sorry?
Have you signed in?
Yes, I have, but I...
Thank you.
I'm confused about the setbacks, I thought we are in RC, and I thought that was all grandfathered under 30-foot setback on sides. That's what's on my deed. So I don't know why we're talking about a 50 and a 40, because of a road going by or a driveway going by, or just...
Just something that says that they're 30 feet?
It was grandfathered where I bought the property, everybody on that whole side of the street was grandfathered.
Whatever those...
As RC.
Whenever, briefly to explain how it may have happened. Right, so what happened was, a lot of these lots were undersized compared to today's zoning code. A lot of them had camps that were built too close, and have been modified over the years, some of them were built. So once the zoning is revised, which it can be revised at any time, the town votes on it, any new construction must meet whatever the zone says. In this case, the setback requirements are 40 feet for RC.
That's under new construction.
Correct, so any pre-existing construction then would be considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure. You're not gonna be asked to tear it down, but if you wanted to expand that in any way, then it would require some special permission by the town through this board, through either a special permit or a variance, depending on what it is you want to do. So when you say everybody is grandfathered, anything that predates the current zoning would technically be considered grandfathered, which means you have the right to enjoy that property as it stands, and modify it to the extent that whatever that modification is, meets today's zoning code. But if there's something that you want to do that exceeds that, then you'd have to get a variance. Now, in this case, and this is, I am equally confused, there's already a variance on the property for the addition, not the home, but the addition that was built. And in that original variance, and you guys have had a little chat, it's a little bit strange, it explains what's existing, and it shows an addition, and the variance is for that addition that's in question now, that he wants to expand on. At the time, you were granted, your previous owner was the property, and variances, by the way, are permanent with the property, for year and ever after. So this variance was granted to build this, which is an addition, and it's not all that detailed, and I don't even know exactly, I might mind it. The footprint that he has now is evidently, provided nothing else was built, other than what's on here, and that can't be modified now without a modification of the variance. So at the time, the house complied, the addition evidently did not, for whatever reasons, a variance was required, it was granted. Now he'd like to modify the piece of the property that is within the setbacks, essentially. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm a...
No, 100% correct.
And that requires us to modify this variance that's already in place, I think.
Mm-hmm, yep, you're right.
But what I'm a little confused about myself, and I'm gonna...
So the first time the variance came along, it went back to the two-acre requirement in RC? Because these are supposed to all be two-acre lots, that's why the setbacks are different. And they were sold as one-acre lots, and we couldn't fit the two-acre setback. So I don't know...
I don't know what zoning existed at the time of, whatever, when was this?
Eighty-six?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have the previous variance filed from 1986, and I have the meeting minutes. So, right now, wishes to, it was Baker, I'm not sure.
Jeff, do you have a copy of this?
Richard Baker.
Yeah.
All of this, oh, that.
Yes, Baker was the first person who bought it.
So Baker was the first person who bought it. Baker stepped forward and explained to the board that he wishes to put an addition onto his home, and that he now has a side, now has a side setback of 40 feet, which is required by zoning.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
By adding this addition, it would bring his setback to 25 feet from the property line.
Because they added the garage on...
Because zoning was updated, and now you can't, you have to either meet, any new construction has got to meet zoning, or any existing construction that was within zoning is determined to be pre-existing non-conforming, which if you suggest is considered grandfathered.
So would these, with their next order, they were going up, and that's gonna change everything?
In this case, if... If this were a special permit, then it would simply be a determination by the board whether or not the change that he's requesting is substantially more detrimental, but that's not what this is. He has an actual variance, and so what was allowed was exactly what's on the plan for the variance. Now he wants to do something different, so he can't legally do that, he has to comply with this variance. The variance, which is a little harder to deal with than a special permit, this has... You've looked at this, my...
I do, and I still have another question about the garage, okay? As far as, because I don't see any plans on, you plan on cantilever, building above the garage?
Correct.
And the cantilever is going in which direction?
There will be no cantilever on the garage.
No cantilever.
But I think one of the things that looks a little screwy, right now, there's a garage, and then there's a family room, and that's existing, correct?
That's correct.
So I think that's the, so there already is a family room, so he's building a master above the existing family room, above the existing garage.
And it's not to be cantilevering in any direction?
No.
So with the exception of, we are cantilevering around the house, which currently meets the existing setbacks.
Yes.
Everything else is staying the same.
Other than the elevation?
Yes, except for going up.
Correct.
So pre-existing, non-conforming, and if it's not, not increasing the nonconformity in any way, and, you know, if the determination would be, going up is not, because it's airspace.
Right.
Okay, if you cantilever it into the airspace, you know, that I would consider, I would think we would have to consider that, is increasing the nonconformity, and, you know, if anybody has a suggestion, or if I'm missing anything, let me know.
So if I stood at the edge of your garage, you're going straight up and flush all the way across?
Correct.
There's not gonna be a cantilever on that side that's already encroaching on that in the front, and in the back, you're gonna have cantilevers, but you have plenty of space.
Correct.
And you have plenty of space on the other side, but that's not changing.
Right, so the main portion of the house? This main portion here?
Yep.
All falls outside of the existing setback requirements.
Right.
Be a foot off the front, 18 off the back.
Yep.
No cantilever here, no cantilever here.
Yep.
On the front of the garage, we're gonna do a bump out with a window with a seat, but we have more than enough, 250 feet of...
So the front of the garage, what are you gonna do, add like a bay window with a bump out?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna cantilever out 12 inches, and then carry that all the way up the front.
And that would be, in which direction?
Bailey Lane.
Facing Bailey Lane.
So facing this way, the front.
Yes, that's what that is.
The garage is this way, where the driveway is.
Correct.
Right there.
Okay, and here, this is considered the side, or no?
That's...
See, with these corner lots, there's a lot of confusion as far as, where's the side, where's the front? Because if there's a side, if this is, if this is considered the front, then you're at 43 feet now, and you needed 50.
Right.
So I guess my question would be, the location of, even still, it is a bump out, that's not, that's, even though it's a window, I mean, is there anything, is it going down to the ground?
No.
Okay, so all you're doing is adding a bay window?
For the most part.
But when you say a bump out...
You're not doing a dormer. The intent was to have a gable at the top of the bump out? The bump out is eight feet, it's 12 inches deep.
Coming off the garage, he's, I believe he's talking off the back of the garage, the family room, off the garage.
So he's saying it's 12 inches deep, but eight feet long?
But on the front.
The front, which is basically facing the back.
Right, but that's not gonna change any setbacks. Because the problem is the side, the problem is here.
Let's see if the garage, if his bump out came in here, and he's at 43 now, this is conceivably, he could encroach on that, you know what I'm saying? The seven feet, you got six and change?
Dave? The question is, does it, on this line here, this is where the encroachment is, right? The bump out's gonna be over here.
Yep.
So he doesn't infringe on that 43?
What is...
Because he's already, if he's 43 to here?
Yep.
And how many feet in is the bump out?
That's what I'm definitely trying to determine right now.
That's the question, right?
Right, I don't know.
Well, how many feet is the...
Just by saying Heritage Way is the...
The garage is 15 feet wide. 15 feet wide, it's eight feet in the middle, that leaves what?
Four feet.
Four feet. Four feet either way from the side, it's corner.
So four feet from the center, so that wouldn't be an issue, if that's exact, okay? I don't have that, I don't have that plan.
You don't have that planned, but...
That would make sense.
Three foot center, right here on the...
Let me look at these all, Dave.
It's already, it's already existing.
So, because it's a corner lot now, you need to meet the 50 feet, you were supposedly supposed to meet 50 feet all the way around. I agree that, at this time, when this was really done, that the requirement was 40 feet, that gets to the existing non-conforming piece, but the reality was that the garage never met the original zoning to begin with, which is why the variance was required. It didn't even meet the 40, because it went to 25, 26. So the garage itself, regardless of what happened with this driveway, whenever that happened, was legally built with this variance, assuming that it was built to these plans, and there is no plans, there's a simple little plot plan here, give it the benefit of the doubt that what's on this plot plan, other than maybe the deck, which we haven't talked about yet, but this meets it. I mean, this is the same.
Yes.
So the question is, can you go up without, I think what Dave was getting at is, well, now, there's a potential that you're building something outside the footprint, which may be within the 50 feet that's required under current zoning code.
Correct.
And that's, I guess, I mean, you have to, if that bump out is within seven feet of the corner, then he's right, and you're actually increasing, technically increasing the footprint. The reality is it going up or increasing the footprint, there is no footprint rule, really, I mean, this has been going on for years and years, I mean, if you change, that's why, if you want to do anything outside this variance, it requires a rewrite of the variance, and then the nonconformity, whatever that may be, can be determined by the board, whether you're going outside the footprint, whether you're going up, whether you're going down, I mean, the detriment could be, you know, somebody's view, in which case, going up can absolutely make a big difference. In this case, maybe it doesn't, the neighbors don't seem to be concerned about that. If you're on a beachfront property, and somebody behind you has a nice view of the pond, or the lake, or the ocean, and you want to do a second story, and you gotta come here, everyone's gonna say, hey, you're ruining my view, that's the most popular concern with going up, and you're going up inside, so I'm just kind of throwing out there, why, why this has to come to the board, I'm not suggesting that this is something that is inappropriate, I'm just saying that that's what we have to deal with. But because it's not pre-existing non-conforming, we kind of don't have to go through the iteration of, you know, the step-by-step process of the special permit rule. It's really, is there something about the lot that necessitates this, but by virtue of fact that this decision has already been written, that's what carries forward as far as meeting that?
I would think so.
I mean, I don't know if you guys have comments on that, I mean, at this point, what we're faced with is justifying a variance, or a modification of the variance. or a modification of the variance and that requires the, um, satisfaction of the, um, you know, the threshold of, of something about the lot. We can get into all that, I guess we want, but that may be.
I don't think we need to because it's already taken care of by that, we're just modifying what that variance granted.
Yeah, the hardship was determined by a previous board.
At least that's my, my take on it.
Was the deck there when you bought it?
It was, I actually brought pictures from.
Do you happen to know when the deck was built?
Yes.
It was before my time here.
Well, you knew, four years, right?
So I have a photo from the listing that actually has a date stamped on it.
That's their application.
Oh, it's this one. There's a, there's a black and white one there that is horrendous, that you really can't even see the deck, right? Can you see the date on that black and white photo on the bottom right of the corner, by any chance?
Eight eighteen twenty-eleven.
Okay, so this is, just want to pass this around, this is the, this is the deck. Uh, it hasn't been changed other than I slapped a coat of paint on it. And this is actually from the side as well.
Do you have to mark these up as exhibits?
Well, we have the.
Then it was.
Plans we have to, we need to do the record, but now where are these from, John?
These are from your realtor?
No, the one that's black and white that I submitted with the application, it was from the realtor. These here I took, uh, the other day, just to bring us.
No.
So we knew it was at least there since twenty-eleven.
Right, which doesn't help.
No, I wish we had another date. The reason why we're trying to figure out the date is if it's been there for ten or more years, there's a theory that it's grandfathered in, use your words, and then maybe it's not as big of a deal.
Yes, the, um, when I was talking with Les, he went to go find a permit, found that there was never a permit pulled for the deck.
Or, you know, perhaps it was misfiled in the turnover of different building inspectors and stuff, so I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt here.
Possible.
You know, because we can't, you know, we could go out and prove whether or not it's been there for ten, fifteen years. We're not going to do that.
Did he inspect it when he was out there?
Les has never actually come out to the house, more than willing to.
Really?
Do any of the neighbors know if, when the deck went in by any chance?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing because I don't think the last people that owned that house did anything to that house.
Okay.
There was a people, was it Marcia?
Marcia, please.
Yeah, she's the only one that did anything to that house.
And what year did she move out?
We bought it from Marcia.
Okay, what year?
Twenty-twelve, January twenty-twelve.
It's the problem is we don't.
And who?
And how long did Marcia live there?
I could, I could look.
Yeah.
Well, there you go.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Marcia, eighty-seven.
She bought it in eighty-seven?
That's what you would look at, right? Yeah.
So she, she built it between eighty-seven and twenty-twelve.
The previous owner, the previous owner built the deck, I think, the question is, when did they build it? It was, I mean, technically it was built illegally if there was no permit pulled.
You guys can't talk at the same.
The, the code says that if, if an illegal, if a structure is built illegally built, then within ten years you can't appeal to have it removed, so basically it becomes grandfathered after ten years, technically. That's just the way, that's just what the law says, okay, if you came in here and it was built three years ago, then, you know, you could appeal to have it inspected and proved, but the problem is now it encroaches on the setback and it was built without a permit and it would have required a variance at that time had someone gone through the proper channels to have it. That, that's why we're kind of just trying to figure this out, but, um, my question of whether or not it was inspected or if he, he went to the site was because if, if it was not, I mean, I, I'd be curious to know whether he has any issues with how it was built, you know, the deck is a pretty easy thing to inspect.
Deck and code has changed dramatically in the last three years, okay? There's a new code for decks, prescriptive deck code, okay, and, uh, all the decks, almost everybody knows, don't meet the new code today and that's as of three years ago, you know, it's six by sixes, okay, for your post and four by fours are no longer allowed, so if this was a permit job, you know, within three years, inspected, it's six by sixes. It's got to be lagged to the house, it's got to have diagonal bracing, there's a lot of different things, so you can tell if it's, you know, if it's purely recent construction, if it was permitted. And, you know, if, you know, if Les were to go out and inspect it, what's he inspecting? He's inspecting something that he doesn't know how long it was there.
Right.
You know what I mean? He's not going to do concrete testing or anything, I mean, it's, it's, it's existing and as far as I'm concerned, it's existing. I don't have an issue with the deck, if you try to expand the deck, you'd need to come back, okay, for a variance.
Yep.
Okay, but I, I'm not sure we need to go much further on the deck, I do have another question going back to his bump out, however, because, well, anything that projects, you know, into the space, um, that infringes on a setback, it's always been my understanding, you know, that that could be, and the gray area there is it doesn't go to the ground.
Are you talking about in the form of the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because I, you know, I know like a, you know, if somebody were to, you want to put a little portico on the front of your house, okay, and you don't meet the setback, you can't do it. Because it's, once it's attached to the house, now you can build a deck anywhere you want and don't attach it to the house, you don't, you're not required to meet setbacks, but, you know, if something attached to the house is a permanent fixture, is considered part of that, part of the house's footprint.
So I do have a question though, on A-one, it says existing first floor plan, is that bump out existing or are you adding that?
No, that is going to be added.
Okay.
So there's confusion on that, on that drawing.
Well, it just says existing, yeah, it should just be a little spot that says to be added, but.
Right.
Yeah, whoever you are. John's drafting.
Well, it's kind of a gray area too, though, as far as, you know.
I'll be honest, I mean, in this case, on that issue, it's already all non-conforming, there's nothing that says you have to stay within the footprint, that's just an interpretation, what it says is you can't intensify the non-conforming nature for a special permit, or if you're asking for a variance, desirable relief may be granted without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or by law, that's all it says. So by going up, one could easily say, my understanding was you can't go up either, or you can't go up. You're, you're right, a, a, a setback, encroachment would trigger, could trigger a variance.
Right.
But he's already here for a variance, he already has one on the whole thing, so the question to me is, this is all interpretation, so the question to me is, does what he wants to do now, is that more detrimental or does it substantially derogate from the tent, uh, the, uh, the intent of the bylaw more so than what's already there that's, that he has a variance for?
And my biggest, my biggest concern was, are we increasing the non-conformity and I don't see that.
I think he absolutely is, by virtue of the fact that he's almost doubling the amount of square feet, now, is that bad?
Well, when I, when I.
That doesn't mean I'm not in favor of it, but I, I think that the not, there's a substantial amount of additional living space now that is going to be built inside the setback, whether call it up, call it out, call it whatever you want. I mean, that's just an interpretation, that doesn't mean I'm not in favor of it or that I, I think that it's substantially, you know, uh, more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, in fact, I think in a lot of cases, and this one perhaps, it's a nice upgrade.
Uh-huh, well, I agree, I agree, and my, my, my interpretation is that if, if, if you're going up and you're not increasing the footprint, you're not increasing the non-conformity, so we can choose to disagree on that one, because I've dealt with it.
I think at the end, we could probably agree that this is probably an okay project.
It is. I've dealt with it several times, Jeff, and also in surrounding towns.
But this isn't even going down.
If I go out a couple inches.
Absolutely.
Got to change your plans, okay, if I go straight up, you know, somebody would be, have to be hard pressed and it would have to be in their bylaws because it's not in the state codes as far as anything about increasing the non-conformity.
I guess the question is, is it more detrimental?
About making it bigger.
If, he, here's how I feel about it, I guess, I agree with Jeff, there is substantial living space, but I also agree with you. If he was coming out thirteen feet to the, outside the garage, and we would have an issue, but because he's going up, it's less detrimental and we, the other thing I always look at is, not that this is the deciding factor, but I always like to hear from the neighbors because like Jeff said, if you're living next to the water, you know you'd have people lined up to say my view, my this, my that, my sunrise, my sunset, I don't think it's going to, you know, really detrimental even.
Well, I think that actually adds substantial interest for the neighbors because now they're looking from a one-story cottage to, you know, a nice looking colonial modern house, so I, I think it's, it's actually adding value to the neighborhood.
The only question I would have is the bump out and because the bump out doesn't go to the ground, I tend to lean towards what you said, because, you know, I do this all day and guys groan and moan about, oh, I came to this and I came to that because, and this is exactly what it is, if it, if that went all the way to the ground, if he was doing it with the garage and there was a fireplace or something like that.
Wouldn't work.
Wouldn't work.
Nope.
Is that creating potentially a new non-conformity or expanding the existing non?
The bump out?
Yeah.
It's expanding the existing.
I think it's.
I don't, I'm not, that's a serious question because you've got two different lot lines here.
No, because they're already forty, they're already at forty-three and they're already under the fifty required, so they're.
But you're, you're suggesting the bump out is, is, you're, you're dealing with the same non-conformity though, right?
It's the same non-conformity.
Even with or without the bump out.
Right.
Is that right?
Because it's three and a half feet, so three and a half and forty-three.
Because that can trigger something too, sometimes you, oh, you're creating a new one that way, well, that, you know, sometimes that can cause problems.
Because he's already at forty-three.
Well, it's like somebody who, you know, you know, you have your, your front setback and you say, well, you know what, I've got all double hung windows, I'm going to put, I'm going to put a bay window in.
And it what, approaches on the front setback or something because the house is set too close, is that why? Is that what you're saying?
Interpretation is not that it's, it's because of its foot, its footprint, even though it is a window and for the most part, like, you know, most of the houses around here, I mean, it's, it's still under the eve, but it's the way, it doesn't go to the ground, I, I don't have an issue with it.
All right, so, what's on the line?
Well, I, I mean, we can't, I don't, I'm still not sure how to deal with.
Unless somebody does have an issue with it.
You, you, there, he's asking for a variance for the deck as well, I mean, there's two variances in play here, so we can't just ignore the deck and not talk about it anymore, he's applying.
Should we move on from the house to the deck?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I, yeah, and I think that just briefly on that, that whole, uh, existing non-conforming or whatever we're talking about, whether he's going straight up or going out or whatever, I think it, it's again left, up to the board to decide this sort of nuance of whether it is substantially detrimental to the public and that's the difference between what he's doing and what someone does when they are blocking someone's view to the ocean.
Right.
So in this case, it's clearly not detrimental, in this case, case is already an existing variance has been granted, we're just modifying an existing variance, my, my, and we don't even need to get into whether they should have granted that variance in the first place, because it, years ago was much more compli, people were granting variances like special permits and it really shouldn't be working that way, they probably should not have granted the existing, the, the current variance. Seems that, but they have and, and you are making your property better for everybody, so. In that case, I, I can, I can see how that, they allow the board to, some leeway here to, to make a decision for the town, what, what is best for the town ultimately is what we're trying to do within the law because someone could, um, try to overturn this, we always try to do things legally so that we can defend it, basically.
So I have a question on whether the deck is actually an exist, a second non-conformity, I guess, or if it's the same, I feel like it's almost the same issue because it's twenty-three feet, granted it wasn't part of this original variance, so maybe that's why it's second, it's the second one, but it's not, it's the same setback.
Oh, well, it's.
So it's, it's expanding the existing non-conformity.
If we were being built today, right, it would be increasing the non-conformity and would require us, would require a variance for sure.
But, but because we're already, it's already an existing non-conformity on the setback, is it the setback or is it the structure that causes it? You know what I mean, because we're already, he's already, we're getting the variance for the, this one.
I wouldn't say it's a structure because that deck, you know, the deck could have been put on any part of the house that where it was in conformity.
Right.
The deck is, the deck's existing and I can't challenge that.
For what it's worth, let's, let's go in the wayback machine, pretend that we're granting a variance for the deck and the garage because they probably would have done that.
Well, the reality, oh, sorry, the reality is we're.
Right, they would have, if they came one time with the garage and the deck, they would have granted everything.
This one, sure, I, yeah, they probably.
Of course it would.
Of course it would.
Yeah, it would have been fine.
They would have, yeah, it's fine, if they're granting variances like that, they would have, add a deck to it, sure.
Jeff, you mentioned something about, and I don't know the law well enough, but you said ten years, it's like, almost like a statute of limitations of, of proclusive effect from, from being able to, um, go against it. It, could the board make a finding based upon, you know, the, the limited, uh, testimony, if you will, from the audience and, and what we've seen from, um, respect to when the previous owners built it, could we make a finding that it's ten years and would it just be a non-issue?
I, I don't know that we really need to, what I was going to say is, we have to grant a modification to the existing variance, which is really a new variance, in reality, we're going to write a whole new, someone's going to write a whole new decision, it's going to explain what we talked about tonight and it's going to include the plan to be built for the plans submitted.
Right.
The deck is on the plans submitted, this, nothing is going to happen with this original variance wherever it is in here. This stays on the books, it stays in the file, it stays permanent and then this is a modification to that. The findings that need to be made in whatever it is that we decide as a board is reasonable for him to build and whether we do that tonight or whatever, it's fine, then we need to find that in granting this modification, that there are unique circumstances relative to solar conditions, blah, 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 how do you do that? Hasn't really argued, actually his application does argue it, but you could, as Paul mentioned, say that this was already found in the previous one, so let's move on, I mean, you can do that. The literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise, we need to kind of explain that a little bit, he's done some of that in his application, some of that may have been found in the other variances as well and then I think the biggest one for tonight is that desirable relief can be granted without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or bylaw, which is some of the stuff that we're talking about, the specifics with setbacks, going up, getting bigger, whatever it is, and, and so, to me, it's kind of like, that's why I don't need to be harping on the merits of the project, I'm trying to, I was trying to figure out early on, what is the real non-conformity, what are we dealing with, I think there were several things in play, this is now considered a, a corner lot, so now instead of forty, it's really fifty, so I think we need to capture all that stuff and whatever it is we decide to clean it all up, right, so, you know, fifty feet is required now, for example, I'm not, I may not even be correct in saying that, but I think that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
This is now a corner lot, fifty feet's required from here, from there, doesn't meet it, okay? Um, whatever other is, if it's a conforming lot or I, this is now, it is, has always been a conforming lot, I believe, so you've got eighty thousand square feet, right? Which is what's required, you know, that kind of stuff, so as Paul said, we just got to try to do this correctly and legally so there isn't any question and then substantiate it, so, I don't know, I'm babbling on, but I think.
No, no, I think you just.
Be included in the decision that it's going to meet the plans, you submitted plans, if we have comments on the plans, as David suggested, maybe the bump out causes issues, you can, whatever, I mean.
And that's kind of what I was alluding to, we don't need a separate variance, it's, can be encompassed under the same.
Yeah, I've gone full circle, I guess, saying that there's two, but the, um, the legal ad implies that you need two, your application is saying you need another, but I think it can be all encompassed in, in one modification.
I am not writing that. Do we have time, do we have to do it right now?
Well, the decision doesn't have to be written tonight, but you don't have to even make a motion tonight if you don't want to, but.
No, no, I don't, I don't mind, it's just, if we're, if we're going to quote unquote clear it up, that sounds. No, it, no, no, I have no problem voting on it, I just, uh, the clearing up sounds like we, we do need to be definitive about the setback issues if you want to, if you want to, um, explain the fa, I don't even know that it's because it's a corner lot, it's a fifty-foot setback anymore, I think that is the setback, whether it's.
Well, I think it was originally forty back in nineteen eighty-six or.
I think they just increased that, but it had nothing to do with the fact it's a corner lot.
No.
Well, it does.
It was because he fell within the range before and now it doesn't.
Forty is side. It's now, it's still is, forty feet is required on the side. What he's saying is this is actually a corner lot. At what point it became a corner lot, I don't know, but now Les' interpretation is because it's a corner lot, you need, you need fifty from both, both corners.
Right, I, I.
That's what he said. Fifty's never coming to play before tonight.
But it's sort of the same thing.
I think. Is that your?
That's it. I, I've sat with Les probably about a dozen times since we initiated this. And he kept explaining and explaining, finally the light dawns on my head about the driveway becoming a private way to grant them the frontage. Which makes my lot a corner lot. There is now a street along with Bailey Lane, which requires the fifty.
Oh, cause he had to need the, the frontage, so that, that by definition makes you a corner lot, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So at that point, did he explain that that's why you need now fifty feet from that?
Versus the forty.
Okay, so that seems to be consistent with.
But it doesn't really matter that it needs fifty because he was already non-conforming at forty.
Correct. Well, I guess it does for this whole bump out issue because now, well, not really, it's seven feet. I was gonna say it may, it approaches on like half the garage now, but. I guess, you know, that's, I mean, it's a moot point.
It's still, it's still the same non-conformity. It was, it was in the variance.
I'm not sure how we should address the issue with the deck. Because I, you know, I don't know that I could comfortably say, you know, okay, we're granting it, it was, it was pre-existing non-conforming. I almost wish the deck wasn't there.
Of course.
Okay, I mean, because I don't have, have a good feeling on how I can say, yep, okay, yeah, it's grandfathered or. It was there originally or somebody built it five years ago. I don't know, I just, I just wish the deck was never there.
Or if there was a permit for it.
Or if there was a permit, it would have been much better, absolutely.
I was kind of getting at, is there some way that we can at least?
No.
I only, you know, have, have that be part of the construction review since it was never a permit pulled for it. Have him at least. Dean it, say, you know, whatever. I'm not saying it's unsafe, but I don't know.
I, I don't know that.
There's a lot of treehouses out there that are built.
I don't know that, no, there's a way for us to, to, you know, put that as a condition, Jeff, because that may entail that this whole deck's gotta be ripped down. And now he's gotta build it new again.
That's just, he's got inspected to current code.
Yeah, exactly. That's gotta be, well, that's, that's a given, so one of the conditions will have to be that it need, that that existing structure that has not been inspected. Needs to be inspected.
And Dave's point is it's, he would then inspect it to current code and essentially required it to.
Okay, if I wanna say, alright, prior to prescriptive deck codes, now that's something Les could do. He's got, you know, he's hiring a contractor who's gonna have an unrestricted construction license, I assume, right?
That's me.
Do you have a license? CSL?
Yes.
Unrestricted.
Correct.
You can't do your own. Okay, just letting them, but I mean, you know, is it a four by four? Four by four?
Right now the post, yeah, four by four.
Okay, so you know what, it's not gonna meet today's code. End of story.
Right, so what happens then?
No, no, with my deck or your deck or anybody else's in town, because ninety-nine percent of them have been built before, three years ago.
Right, but by, but to Paul's point, but to put it in the, as a condition that needs to be inspected. He's not gonna inspect it to ten years ago code. It's today's code and we put it in there as a condition, he's gonna say, well, I get a condition, I inspect it, doesn't meet it, you gotta tear it down. That's what's gonna happen.
No.
I think, if we put something in there specifically, the requiring him to, to look at.
It could be, you know, I don't even know if we could condition that it could be, you know, should, can we say it's conditioned upon a safety inspection? Okay, by a third party, okay? I mean, basically a lot of times, now insurance companies coming out and this, they're. They're even stricter than the building codes.
Don't they, there needs to be a permit pulled on that, whether it was done, whatever. I mean, I.
You can't pull a permit retro on something that doesn't meet today's codes. How do you do that, Paul?
I know, I know. Well, I'm suggesting it may need to be, do we beef, you beef it up then? Are you ever gonna redo the deck to that square footage, the same?
If it required, personally, the way it's built right now, I wouldn't have built it that way.
Right, so you don't mind if, if we said that that deck can stay where it is. Well, grant, that will be part of the, the modified ver- uh, variance. Uh, but it does need to be inspected and a proper permit needs to be pulled for that as well. You can't really continue without it.
No, if, 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 if it's required, then that's no problem at all.
To rebuild it, you mean?
That's no problem.
Do you mind rebuilding it?
No.
Cause we can issue a, a permit, I mean, I think that makes things a little bit easier.
Condition.
Yeah.
Condition that the deck be rebuilt and inspected along with the addition.
Well, not necessarily.
I mean, and not to just cost you money, but you may redesign it a bit too.
Is it brush treated?
It is.
Okay.
It may not need to be rebuilt, we just, we don't, obviously you're suggesting it would be, but we don't know whether things can be sistered up and posts can be.
Is it flash to the house? Uh, judging by the looks of it, probably not. Probably the same guy that built the one that.
So part, part of the. You know what happens to a lot, a lot of those? They call them a builder's deck. They throw them on last minute, short money, the footings are eighteen inches instead of four feet. There's never a permit involved. I've replaced probably fifty of those in the last ten years.
If we're gonna tie that into the, that variance modification, it has to be inspected. To, to this code, cause everything is gonna be, everything you're doing is gonna be a code, the, the addition, everything.
I don't wanna speak for you, but my hunch is that if you're gonna do this, you were probably gonna do the deck to begin with at some point. Or you were gonna address the deck.
Because after, after all this, the, the variance and the setbacks came to light, I was gonna let everything play out if.
You don't wanna touch it because it's non-conforming, you don't want it to cause a problem.
So I was leaving everything until after this is.
But let me ask you a question, not to interrupt you, but I mean, if you, if you had carte blanche within sort of this area. Would you incorporate that into a, a new deck into the design of your addition? Would you be interested in doing that and submitting? A modification that might be even better than what you were asking for, that kind of handles all this?
Is for the deck portion itself?
Yeah.
To include the deck as part of the project that you, you know, it's kind of what we just talked about.
Sure.
Alright, listen.
As long as the footprint.
Even though the footprint's the same, once you rip a deck down, okay? Most likely, you're going to need a new permit and conceivably he's gonna have to come back in front of us again. Because he's, he's ripped it, he's ripped it down and he's rebuilding it, you know.
No, but what I'm suggesting is he go back and modify these plans to show the new deck that he wants to include with this project and we give him a, a bit, the variance for the whole thing.
So.
Including a new deck that is all part of the same setback that Gina's talking about. It's all the same thing, the bump out, this, it's all dealing with the same setback requirement that we're trying to handle here and clean it all up. The deck was built without a permit, you know, shame on whoever built it for not going through the proper channels, but we have no history on it. So we're asked to either provide forgiveness after the fact for something that we don't really know anything about. Or, you know, maybe you say, look, I'm willing to incorporate this into the project and I'll do it right and we'll all know it's right and you'll. Provide us with a plan. You know, I'm just throwing an option out.
Do we have to say parameters on the size of the deck or anything like that?
The size of the deck, absolutely can't, can, cannot increase it by an inch, okay? It's already non-conforming and, you know, I mean, if, 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 if you really wanted to play the game. It's gonna be six inches smaller. I'm decreasing the non-conformity. I don't need to go to the board.
No, but he's here.
I know, he's already here now.
Variance, a variance, you can do anything that you want.
Wish the, wish the septic.
See what I'm saying, Dave, though? I mean, he's, I'm not suggesting we grant something.
Diverted box, I get, well. Okay, so it's, digging's not gonna be a problem for the deck if you have to, have to dig the, okay.
So the deck is part of the assessor's tax card.
Yeah.
Just a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's just.
Do, I'm just wondering.
Of course, yeah, it's open discussion, I believe. Are we in discussion right now? Sort of.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
So, are, are we, are you required to react to the deck because it was part of the original?
Application for, uh.
Or can you just, you could just grant the variance for the ri- riser, you know, for the second floor.
That's a confusion. I don't know that we can do that.
Denial in any application.
But can you just ignore that part of it or is that not allowed?
Withdraw it.
If you could withdraw it, that would be, that would have.
You can withdraw part of an application.
So it's basically a non-issue because it's not really any longer part of this variance request. It's still de facto not permitted. Not permitted, but we're not, this board is not addressing that. They're simply addressing the second.
Well, yeah, it was, it was probably recommended by the building inspector to get that, get that deck dealt with at the same time.
And I'm, I'm asking, do we have to or could we just sort of deal with that part of it and?
You don't have to, but I think.
Jeff said, if you're gonna correct all the wrongs that have been done and make them all right.
Yeah, but you know, that's like, that's just, I mean, I get it, if, 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 if people had all the money in the world and all the time in the world, that would be wonderful. But maybe the more pragmatic thing is to think about it as, let's deal with this and then at some other point.
Well, you gotta justify a variance for the deck now. If you don't wanna incorporate it into this. Or, or withdraw it, but now it's been identified as an illegal structure, so now the building inspector, what do you want him to do? Do you want the building inspector? He's identified this as requiring a variance.
What would you do? Like a cease and desist, you have to rip it down? Is that what he, would he be obligated to do that if there's no?
Deck doesn't. Well, it'd create a whole ball.
Adding a deck does not meet the criteria for a variance. Okay, so if, you know, bottom line is if he, you know, if there was no deck and he came to us now, he doesn't meet, he doesn't meet the hardship requirements, the topography or anything. Did Les, and this is something we don't know, did Les say you need to get this squared away with zoning? And he put it on our plate because there's no permit.
He identified it as a non-conformity that required a variance.
Says in the denial. Near variance for the deck.
Yeah, he's brought it to light here.
Right, on the first page of the denial.
And therefore we're required to address it. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, we have the authority to grant a variance or modification to one with whatever conditions we like. We could condition, yes, this is fine, condition you tear that deck down. I mean, you're already, I don't like that, you know, and then you don't get the whole variant, I mean, we can.
I was just throwing that out there to try and think about all the options. Can you sort of ignore it without requiring to tear it down? It's just sort of like a non.
I, I think it's Jeff saying it, we have sort of the obligation to try to clean up the loose ends. And that's what we're always gonna do and that's why we're, that's why there's such a lengthy conversation here, cause it's gonna come up again. And it's gonna be slightly different situation than yours and we have to be so definitive about these things so that, again, it's defendable and. And when someone wants to do something that we think is offensive, we need to be able to find reasons why they can't do it, whereas you can do it. So, or why, you know, what's the difference between his and ours? Well, because of this and they granted a variance and, you know, the whole deck thing. So what you're getting at is. Based upon the fact that a variance has already been granted, if you. Yes, could we modify the variance with the new deck on it and just be done with that then?
I'm just saying essentially, if, if you wanna do a new deck, then essentially we're not gonna deal with the variance on that one, it's gonna come down.
Right.
He's given us plans that include going up on the garage and a new deck, all of which deals with the same non-conformity. And we modify the variance with these findings that it's not substantially more, it, excuse me, not substantially more detrimental, but the. Relief can be granted without substantially derogating. You gotta get to that point and it's a set of plans, this is, here's what I'm gonna do. And we all agree to that, whatever that is, and it may include a deck, and it gets rebuilt. If, if. I, I'm not saying, I don't know that we can't work around it some other way, but my, I guess my question to you was if. If you have any interest in rebuilding that deck, maybe in some other way that doesn't get closer or maybe even gets a little further away and you would have incorporated it. Had you given permission or that, you know, you had plenty of setback to work with?
I would have, I would have.
Would you do that?
Oh, absolutely, I would do that. My wife had also brought up, cause she's not a fan of the deck, about putting a patio there. I don't know if the pad, and that's completely different.
Yeah, you don't, you're not even.
Patio would not.
You don't even need a permit for that, which would be nice. And that, that's exactly what I was thinking, however.
That's not a strong, a patio's not a strong.
I hate when she's right, but.
Well, you know what you would do is you could modify your deck size to something smaller, so you had a decent sized landing. Out, out of wood. Then you went down onto a patio, so you may, you keep a deck, but it's just a lot smaller.
Right.
Um, that would be great.
The problem is now that we're dealing with fifty feet, so.
Well, I know.
And, and if you, if we don't address this tonight, whatever it is you wanna rebuild is gonna be, it's gonna go right through you. I don't think there's gonna be any room left.
And that's what I was just gonna jump in, but you guys.
Address as part of this.
Because otherwise his deck is, is, it's on the other side of your house. So I think we have to address the deck in this modification. We don't think it needs a second variance. I think we just address the deck, let him decide if he wants to take it down.
And he can always make it.
Do something different.
Do you, did, cause he's in the setback, if he decides to take it down and get, and get a permit to make a smaller deck.
His deck is gonna be on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
It's gonna be fifty feet now, so it's only twenty, I don't know where the twenty-five's gonna be way over here.
Well, I was just saying.
Whatever he does, it can't.
He can't really do another deck at all if we don't address it in this variance.
Right, right. No, I think we need to approve at least what he's got there.
I think we approve what he's got and then if he wants to get rid of it, he can get rid of it and if he's got, if he wants to change it, then it's a different story. If you wanna build a different deck, you're gonna have to come back to us.
Yes.
Well, it, it, so if he wants to make it smaller, would we grant a variance again?
No, if he wants to make it smaller.
Modification to the modification.
If he wants to get rid of it or make it smaller, then it, it's, that's not, does he have to?
I mean, he's decreasing the non-conformity.
Usually it's to the plans submitted. That's the easiest way to do it. We can write all this stuff, you're allowed to do this, but no further.
Do we have measurements on the deck?
Which means we need, we would need some new plans.
We do?
And it might be worth it to. I mean, are you in a rush to get moving on this or?
What, what's gonna happen is, but my feeling is, my, my feeling is, if it does get granted and you guys allow me to do this. We're gonna get a month worth of rain and I can't cut my roof off. Yeah, but.
I'm, I'm wondering if you wouldn't be interested in throwing it out there that you, you'd modify what you have and we just continue this or something. It's an option, I don't know. If you'd like to just kind of move on, but maybe some time to, to maybe present something that's a little different that gives you exactly what you wanted to begin with. But that means this delays you at least, well, August now. It'll be August.
Guys won't be here in August.
Yeah. No, I mean, excuse me, September, it'll be two months, yes.
That would be if you wanna modify the existing deck into something else that is that size or smaller.
No, if he takes the deck down, do we care? Like, that's not.
No, no, we don't care if he moves it all together.
If he replaces it, we do.
Right.
Yeah, if he builds any structure that's inside of fifty feet, now in the future, he's gotta come back.
Yeah, but that's, but that's, that's still not approving what we have already drawn. That's why I'm saying like, if he decides he wants to build a new deck, it's gonna be over, over here anyway. So it'll be permissible.
So if you can, if you condition what he, he has here, you grant him the variance for the deck, conditioned upon it meeting today's code. Would that work? And then he can be done today and you can choose to tear it down. The, the bottom line is you're either gonna tear it down or you're gonna replace it with something to code exactly what's here.
I don't.
Require that that be rebuilt.
Bring it up to code.
Removed and rebuilt.
Yeah.
And then you rebuild, well.
And then it's part of the same variance.
Outside the existing footprint, not to exceed existing footprint.
I don't say, I don't think we even say built to existing code. I mean, you're gonna tell somebody to go make their house to the existing code. You can't make somebody make something that's existing to the existing.
No, no, I'm saying he has to tear it down because it's, we don't.
But he's allowed to build.
Otherwise we have to deal with it and we don't wanna deal with it.
Rips it down, if he rips, if he rips it down, everything's removed, then it has to meet.
Legally and we're asking for.
Has to meet the setbacks, so he needs variance.
Right.
Which is what is.
Which is what we're gonna provide him with through this.
That's what I'm wondering.
So we either grant him a variance to replace the deck as well.
Exactly.
Okay, so if he wants to rip it down or if he wants to leave it in place till whenever, that's fine.
Yeah, and then the only time he would have to come back.
All those, these other things, I ju- I just don't see how that's feasible.
I having him come to get.
He brought up the patio.
Hold on, second?
He brought up the patio, so if he went with patio and just did stairs off of his house.
I, I don't.
Still has to meet setbacks. If he rips everything down, cause he's still gonna require footings, it still has to meet setbacks.
We need to approve what's on the plan. I think we, we stopped talking about if, that, when, how. We have to either approve what's on the plan or not approve what's on the plan. And don't require him to fix things that were built before his time because if I went into any of your houses, none of them would be to code. And I'm not gonna tell you to fix them, bring them to code, because codes change. So I feel like we approve what's on the plan, one modification. And then if he wants to do something with his deck later, making it bigger, he's gonna come back to us. If he wants to get rid of it.
Variance again, you gotta start over.
No, it's a modification. If he wants to get rid of the deck, then it doesn't affect us. That's my opinion.
I would agree.
I, I have, I have trouble with the deck, but I mean, we can, I don't know. I, I agree if, if it can be encapsulated in a, but now you gotta keep it. I mean, what do we, what's the variance say? What's, what's the variance gonna say then?
Yeah, but.
Built to plans or no, I mean, I.
It's approved as submitted. It's approved as submitted, right now it's approved as submitted, if any changes, taking down a deck shouldn't be a change, he's not increasing any problems if he takes it down.
Correct, yeah.
So if he wants to make it bigger, he's gonna come back, and if he wants to put it over here, he's gonna come back, if it's permissible and he puts it over here, then who cares? You know what I mean, it's, he can demo it if he wants, but we have to approve what's submitted today.
I, I agree that we either have to approve what's submitted or not, or he submits something that's what he actually wants, as to his benefit as an option, and then we approve what's submitted at that point, and it's actually, it's actually more closely relates what you actually would like to do, he hasn't, he doesn't wanna touch this because he's afraid of the, the whole, this point moving.
Well, timeframe.
And, and so, but the timeframe's an issue, and you may wanna move on tonight.
If he comes back in September, uh, he, he could, he could pray, that he could break ground mid, you know, late October, okay?
I don't think it's fair.
Well, what would you prefer, I guess?
Don't leave it up to him, if you.
Leave existing, and if I decide to tear it down, then we'll just get rid of it altogether. I was gonna say, I'm waiting for him to look, look for his wife's. No, she, she took the little one downstairs, because the little one was yapping, so. I don't have a problem, you know, as Gina suggested, and what John has, you know, agreed to, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, we could take an informal vote, if you guys want, but, I think we, we've hashed this through pretty extensively, and there's only so many things that we can do, I, I'm totally in disagreement with, you know, having inspected, you know, to be safe up to code, that's not, that's not our, that's not our job.
I'm totally against that.
If he leaves it exactly the way it is, you know, one, and it's not built to code, it falls off, listen, all we're doing is going by the drawings, we didn't, we didn't sign off on anything structural, architectural, okay, we've got a picture, it doesn't, it shows square foot, it's nothing, we don't know what, how that thing's attached to the house, it could be attached with a few rock screws, I don't know.
It might not even be attached.
What's wrong with that?
If you're gonna make any motion, you gotta read this. But if you're gonna make any mock-up, these plans, mock-up these. So just, someone just needs to read that, you have a copy there, attached to the proposed.
So, wanna make a motion?
You gotta read it, exhibit. Before you make a motion, we need to get that into the record. That's the small thing. Yeah, they're all late, I already marked them, just read the cover sheet. Unless you, and if you're gonna mark something or change something on it.
These are all marked up, okay, we're good to go, so I wanna read into the record, um, the plans for fifty-five A Bailey Lane. Plans marked as Exhibits A through H, I want you to read all these in, Exhibit A is plot plan dated five fourteen sixteen, stamped by Curtis M. Johnson, PLS of Express Serving in Overmass. Exhibit B is Sheet A one, existing floor plan dated five twenty-four sixteen, drawn by John's drafting design, Philip Karatokas, architect, thank you, fourteen Symphony Road, PBD Mass oh one nine six oh. Exhibit C, Sheet A two, proposed second floor addition dated five twenty-four sixteen, drawn by John's drafting design. Exhibit D, Sheet A three, front elevation existing and proposed new structure dated five twenty-four sixteen. Exhibit E, Sheet A four, rear elevation existing and proposed dated five twenty-four sixteen. Exhibit F, Sheet A five, side elevations left and right dated five twenty-four sixteen. Also included in the application is Exhibit G, Plan Book one forty-three, Plan fifty-eight, Plan of Land Owner by Bartlett Related Trust dated March nineteen seventy-seven, and recorded on six eight nineteen ninety seven, seventy-seven, excuse me, shows Bailey Lane lots. Lastly, Exhibit H, Definition Plan of Land by John Decolos of PBD Mass dated February nineteen eighty-four, signed by the Planning Board on six six eighty-four. Plan Book one ninety-four, Plan sixty-seven, recorded two twelve eighty-five, that shows Heritage Way, applicant was Heritage Estates. There you go. Wanna mark them up?
I don't mark up anything, come on, come on.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? You can take a recess if you wanna start writing.
Well, let me just ask, go back to the audience, is there anything else the audience, anybody in the audience has say at this point, with what's been proposed, because, yeah, sure, you state your name for the record.
Tim Doherty, um, it's, I should go down, next door to John, right? Just wanna say, you know, all of our neighbors are in favor of the project, um, the house with the addition will actually conform very much to the neighborhood, most of the houses in the area are two-story houses, will fit in very well, um, with the street and the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I'm Tracy Watts, I'm the reason this is a problem, and we're in Heritage Way, so I'm sorry, John Gray. Arguably, my view gets affected by his second floor, we're, we're completely in favor of this addition, I think it's gonna only increase all our property values, it's gonna beautify the neighborhood, it's gonna look lovely, and it's gonna make his structure, um, much better than it looks now. He's been improving it since he bought it, and it only improves it more, and all of us have been improving all of our properties since we bought it, and we're never gonna finish at this point. But, um, we're all in favor of it, and every, every neighbor around his house came tonight, and no one has a problem, so.
Thanks. Thanks. Sure.
And I'm on fifty-five Bay Lane, next house down, been there since nineteen eighty-two, saw this house built in my backyard. It's literally, because my house was built that way, we figured nobody would really build up into the front, so we took advantage of that. So with this, this would improve my view one hundred percent. No offense.
Trust me, I'll take it.
I'm all for it, my wife Linda Hummer is all for it, she couldn't come tonight, but, um, we're, we're going home, ready to go.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. So we have discussion, or if somebody wants to start working on a motion, if they wanna do that, then we can't really move on anything tonight until we get a motion, so this is for modification of the existing variance, which is gonna include everything that we talked about tonight, so.
Did someone say they had a question out there, I thought, no, everybody's good, okay, all right, so we're probably gonna go into board discussions, so no more audience, right?
Yep, you guys all set, except the applicant, we may have questions, I guess, as we go, so, I think we've kinda hashed this out, does anybody else have anything new and different they wanna discuss?
No, let's write this thing down.
We can take a recess, do you wanna take a recess, or?
Do you wanna just to do that, just so you know that you just have to use that, does that variance wording?
Yeah.
For motions that, owing to circumstances.
So in the decision, we need to make those findings, essentially.
Do you wanna take five to write?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just can't talk? Yeah, I wanna tell him to take, well, you can't.
About business.
You can't.
You're supposed to, but you guys can do it anyways, you're good.
Oh, do you want me to help you?
Of course, I wouldn't even know where to start with this.
All right.
So we're back.
Go ahead. What are we doing? Making a motion?
Hang on.
Whoa. Unpause. Okay.
Okay, so we're back. So Paul wants to make a motion on this variance request, so go ahead.
Pursuant of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 10, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Article 2, Section 9 and 84, the petitioners John Roy A Connell and Rhoda Samara Connell, owners of 55A Bailey Lane, Georgetown, Mass. 101833, in the RC Zone Map 6A, Lot 15. I move that the board grant a modification to a previous variance, ZBA File Number 86-1 for a second-floor addition and existing deck per plan submitted. The previous board has found on February 4, 1986, that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. I further move that, based on plans submitted, the board find that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded, then. Motion.
Go ahead. Who's that?
Discussion.
Sean Dean?
Sean seconded, okay.
Sorry.
So.
That's it. I'm not voting.
Uh, yeah, Sean's voting. All right, is there any board discussion on this? None at all?
No.
All right, so we'll take a roll call vote. Needs to be a supermajority. Um, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so Sean, how do you vote?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes, so the, your variance is granted per the plans that you've submitted, okay? Um, I need to read this, right Patty?
Yes.
And the lapse.
Yeah, so I need to notify you that a variance lapse of permit per Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 10, if the rights authorized by a variance are not exercised within one year of the date of grant of such variance, such rights shall lapse, provided however that the zoning board of appeals in its discretion and upon written application of the grantee of such rights may extend the time for exercise of such rights for a period not to exceed six months, and provided further that the application for such extension is filed with the zoning board of appeals prior to the expiration of such one-year period. If the ZBA does not grant such extension within 30 days of the date the application, uh, excuse me, of the date of the application therefore, and upon the expiration of the original one-year period, such rights may be reestablished only after notice and a new hearing pursuant to the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Mass General Law 48. So if you don't, if you don't do anything within a year, get with her because you may lose your, lose your variance. There's a few things you can do, but if this drags on for a while and you don't start construction, make sure you check with Patty on longevity of the permit, okay? All right.
And then read that.
Thank you. Back in second grade, half an hour.
Can you make it a little bit bigger next time? I just.
Oh, yeah. Regarding the decision that was made tonight, the zoning clerk has 14 days to file decision. Any appeal to this decision shall be made pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 17, within 20 days after the date the notice of decision was filed with the town clerk. And an applicant may file this decision before the 20 days, but does, does so at their own risk. In other words, don't start construction until the appeal period has, has ended, or you do so at your own risk. Okay?
Sure.
Because variances do have a 20-day appeal period. Okay? Anything else Patty? We good?
Just when, so I have 14 days to write the decision and tell them to sign it. By that time, I will give you a call when it's ready and give you the registering to record it.
Excellent.
All right, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Some of it.
Some of it.
Seconded, but.
Seconded.
I think Gina got it and Dave seconded.
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Give me that motion.
The what?
Give me that motion.